Good evening, everyone. I'm Community Planning and Development Director Jason Welker. I will facilitate this evening's work session. It is five forty-four P M on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth. Apologize for the late start. We were awaiting a couple of arrivals so that we could achieve quorum on both the planning and zoning and the city council. This meeting is now called to order in council chambers at one-one-two-three West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. Before I proceed, if everyone will please stand, I will lead us in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, the Sandpoint City Council and Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission are holding this special meeting for the purpose of a joint work session on the update to the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. The final decisions will be made during this evening's meeting, and members of the public will have the opportunity to comment. If you wish to comment, you will need to complete a comment sign-up sheet located at the table by the door and hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. Those attending on Zoom will also have an opportunity to comment. You will raise your hand on Zoom at the appropriate time. With Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman John Hastings absent this evening, Vice Chairman Mo Dunkle, who is also not here, will provide preside for the commission. So at this point, I'd ask the four commissioners who are here to select one of your, one from among yourselves to preside, represent the commission tonight. Is there a nomination?
Amelia nominated.
Is there a second for that? Sure. All in favor of nominating Amelia to preside?
Aye.
Okay, Amelia?
Got it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Or, let's see, we believe Grant Simmons will be joining us later, perhaps. Amelia, will you please conduct a roll call with Commissioners President and confirm a quorum?
Yes, there is. There is four commissioners here.
Thank you. Okay. For City Council, Councillors Joel Espiro, Justin Dittick, Kyle Schreiber, and Pam Duquette are present.
Jason?
Yes?
For the record, could the P and C Commissioners please state your names?
Sure, I'll start. Scott Torpey.
Ivan Ramar.
Wayne Benner.
And Amelia Boyd.
Thank you. Mayor Jamie Grimm is absent at this time, but will be joining us later because City Council President Deb Rule is also absent. Council will need to nominate a councillor to preside over the council meeting. Would somebody like to nominate one from among you to preside?
Joel.
I'll second.
I nominate Joel.
Okay, we got the nomination for Joel Espiro in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. Joel, would you please have the councillors do roll call for the councillors and confirm that we have a quorum?
Yep, go ahead, Pam.
Just who I am, Pam Duquette.
Justin Dirk, Kyle Schreiber, Joel Espiro.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now proceed with the work session. So I'm going to share my screen and we will do some review of what we've already accomplished in these last two workshops prior to this. Okay, just a little background. This is our third work session in the packet posted to the website. There were minutes from the previous two work sessions on February thirteenth and I believe March thirteenth. I have gone through and taken all of the recommended edits from the last two work sessions and organized them into this table, which we will be adding to tonight. So we don't need to read all these. They're all in the minutes, pretty much right out of the minutes. But there is one proposal from chapter four that has been brought up by one of our city councillors since the last meeting. And I was going to start by going back to chapter four before we dive into chapter five and invite Councilman Schreiber to share his proposed amended amendment to the future land use map, which I have on the screen here. Councilman Schreiber, do you want to introduce this proposal?
Yeah.
Consideration?
Thanks, Jason. So if you see the, on the left there, we have our current land use map on our current adopted comprehensive plan. The light blue area is context area three dash B, which is roughly equivalent to our neighborhood mixed use in the designation in the draft update plan that we're working on right now. In fact, on page forty-two of the draft update plan, it specifically says formally identified as context area three dash B. So as you can see, on the east side of Boyer, on that leftmost map, there's that stripe of light blue, context area three B. And then on the rightmost map, it has all been changed to yellow, which is low-density residential. What I'm proposing, and it's based off of a public comment that we discussed at the last meeting, is to basically bring back that mixed-use stripe on the east side of Boyer to be consistent with what our current comprehensive plan shows. The, there's a few reasons for that. I'll try not to get too far in the weeds on this, but you know, in the neighborhood mixed-use description in our comp plan draft, North Boyer is specifically identified as an appropriate location for neighborhood mixed-use. You know, as you can see, the west side of North Boyer is already identified for neighborhood mixed-use, so it's not like this is going to be out of place in the neighborhood. It'll fit right in with the west side of Boyer. And from a city planning standpoint, mixed-use does work best when it's on both sides of the street as it would be if we amended this map. And the description of the neighborhood mixed-use specifically identifies walkability as something that would be desirable. And the Boyer bike-ped route is on that east side of the road. Therefore, the east side offers the best walkability as well. So there's a few reasons why I think we should have edit the map in the draft update.
Just for context, this, this is the former University of Idaho property from the railroad tracks up to East Mountain View Road. We've already seen a couple dozen single-family residents go in in phase one, I believe that was. Phase three is down here. That has been mostly built out with single-family from Boyer all the way around the loop there. And then phase three is moving towards final plat, but they have proposed backing away from some of the multifamily that was approved under a P U D. And the current plan is to build out this road and then look for someone to purchase all of the interior area here. So we are unlikely to see a final plat for that come forward with the original vision envisioned multifamily that was going to be built there.
One quick note on that. I did drive by today and I also checked the county G I S and ground has not been broken on anything that's in that proposed stripe. And all of the properties that are in that proposed stripe are still owned by the developer. They have not been sold to any private parties yet.
Correct.
Can you bring that back?
I was gonna pull up the.
Public Clause.
Yeah, that's easier. I mean.
Because they originally were going to have single-family homes and then they came to us to change that plat to multifamily apartment complexes. So now, Jason, you're telling me that they're going to go back to single-family homes?
Where did I tell you that?
In that corridor.
Right here?
Yeah.
I'm saying there's no plans for that.
There's no plans. Okay.
So as far as, you know, amending the future land use map, this is an opportunity to do that?
Which one's base camp?
Base camp is this development here.
So that's just that empty the hump by the railroad track and now that's here.
Yeah. And this, this road is being, all the infrastructure is being put in this year for this road so that they can complete the required infrastructure and then move to a final plat, but as far as I understand, the original developer of this property has no plans to move forward with his construction. He wants to sell the various lots.
What's, what was the yellow on that map?
Low-density residential.
Plus residential.
This is the base, this is the base camp subdivision here.
What's the blue again on the left?
You said. On the left side of the map, the blue coincides with the pink on the other two maps. It's the same.
The yellow all the way over on the trap, the D. Oh, the one on the right all the way. What's that yellow?
Low-density residential, single family. And then this is orange, I believe is multifamily. Is that right?
So basically, it was originally envisioned to be mixed-use, and then it was changed to single-family. And I'm proposing that we change it back to mixed-use. And to clarify, it hasn't actually been changed yet. In the draft update, it showed it as single-family. I'm proposing that we.
Does it do anything to those developments, the ones the house is living?
If the original developer had, if the developer had had plans to move forward with what was proposed two years ago in the P U D application, it would impact that, but those plans are being walked away from.
Jason, could you read the definition of the mixed-use? Of what that zone allows for, page fourteen.
Page two.
Or Kyle or whoever's got it up. Sorry, I don't have it up on my computer.
Here we go. That's the old context areas. So that's the A C I, mixed-use.
Court.
Now, the left one.
Neighborhood mixed-use. Neighborhood mixed-use is a land use category that serves as a buffer between residential areas and higher-density commercial areas such as downtown. A mix of uses is allowed within existing or new appropriately scaled buildings placed to promote walkability. There are pockets of neighborhood mixed-use throughout the city along Division Pine, North Boyer Avenue and Highway Two. And that's what is being proposed here.
Could you, could you go back to the satellite of that area again, please?
These are very current, fairly current, probably from early last year. These photos are taken, so most of this base camp is built out.
So we're talking this strip right here?
Yep.
Like how, what area? What's the area?
All the way to East Mountain View, basically the western edge of the entire University of Idaho. And it's currently.
Plan, it's mixed-use.
It's currently zoned, single-family in the north and multifamily in the south.
Yeah. We'd be in our current.
So there's current zone. Residential, single-family in the north, residential, multifamily in the south.
Sidewalk can prioritize the walkability. It counts the person Schreiber, is that what you were trying to go for, was to prioritize the walkability on that side with the sidewalk going down there?
Yeah, I think that the bike-ped route there makes it a great opportunity for mixed-use.
And the the vision of mixed-use is basically ground floor commercial with residential upstairs, and that is what we're going to see in the.
Triton, that's what I was gonna ask. That's the Triton.
Triton.
Triton?
No, that's not it.
Milltown.
Milltown.
Not called Milltown. Whatever is being built here this year. I was just looking at the plan today.
You called it, you thought you called it Triton. Is there another Triton?
And this is, the, the buildings that are going in this lot are very much ground floor residential, upstairs apartments. Very nice-looking buildings with parking in the back. So all the, all the commercial is going to face Boyer here. And I think that's Chestnut there.
And just as a refresher, if, if it was mixed-use, neighborhood mixed-use, and we're bringing greater traffic impact onto Boyer in those areas, the developer is responsible then for a traffic impact study. And then would potentially be directed to build in turn lanes to go into those corridors with, is that your?
Well, this, this developer's already widened Boyer to allow, I don't know if it's a full turn lane, but those improvements have already been made to Boyer here to accommodate this, this new road. And there are impact fees that have been collected and will continue to be collected for a future stoplight down here. Although the long-term plan here is to extend all the underneath the railroad tracks as you're aware.
Now, the west side is just strictly residential right now, currently.
There's a preliminary plat that's been approved for a mixed-use residential development right here. I believe we're somewhere right along here. But I don't know where that is in terms, it's actually being built.
So as far as people that bought homes?
No, I'm sorry, the mixed-use residential that we, no, that's industrial. Where's the M U R? Oh, yeah, so right on these green parcels, there is a development that's already come through city council a year or two ago. I don't think we'll see it anytime soon, though. Mixed-use residential. Um, for the sake of moving us along.
I'm just curious about what, how it impacts the people that have bought single-family dwellings.
It doesn't, doesn't impact what's already there. It, it's for all of the undeveloped lots on the former University of Idaho property. This allows, this would allow for the future rezoning of that to mixed-use residential, because it would be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Correct if I'm wrong.
No, that, that's accurate. So it won't impact anybody with the current there. The current, the current zoning will affect the changes.
So if you've got a single-family home back in there and then on that side of Boyer, it's all of a sudden taller, is that what it's going to be, like, commercial underneath? And isn't that going to block their view shed?
Potentially. I mean, most of the homes back there are multi-story that I've seen. I just drove through there today.
They are, yeah.
So I mean, they're blocking each other's views as well, but.
Yeah, but what they look at now is just open to Boyer.
But they were never guaranteed that it would stay open to Boyer.
Nobody's guaranteed a view.
Well, also, just, just so you're aware, the P U D that's already approved here included like four-story apartment buildings along the west side of the phase university, like phase three, yeah. So.
Are there any?
Commissioner Ramar?
Yeah. Any other thoughts?
Oh, I don't want to roll things up, but my thought was, do you know the width of the property? I mean, looking from the scale on the homes, it looks like the property at its best is about seventy-five feet deep. And so because there's no parking on North Boyer, they're going to have to create parking in it. And I'm trying to figure out how you get, you know, standard parking lot that is sixty feet wide.
Well, I can, I can, I won't pull it up because it, it's not on my computer and I'd have to find it. But the, the proposal for this property down here is to have businesses facing these two streets with parking in the back.
Yeah, I was talking about the one on the by the Idaho property. Just that little sliver, it looks kind of thin. That's all I'm asking.
Oh, you're talking about this right here?
Yeah, you're saying that's not as wide as what.
Gotcha. This also has wetland in it, so that, that will never be developed. I'm not sure there's any, I don't think there's any plans to put lots here either. That's very thin. That's likely not to, to be developed, I would, if I had to guess. That's a hundred feet, give or take.
So I see your point, Ivan, to see why, why make such a narrow plot of land?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're running their props and they have to park it.
Right, commercial.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all.
And then add residential on top of it. Then you have, you have more.
Yeah, and so where will they access Boyer?
I believe that you mean from down here?
Yeah.
If there were a mixed-use development here, then the access to Boyer would be like a road that goes into like a parking area somewhere here.
And then they would.
And that's the current, the, the P U D that was approved had a, had like a little road that went around inside here with multifamily all around it, inside and out.
And so that.
But that was using that entire, is that a lot? Not absolutely.
And just keep in mind that by amending the future land use map, you're not dictating what developers can do on this property. They would allow for a rezone to mixed-use residential in the future without having to amend the comp plan in the future, but it doesn't require that we rezone to mixed-use residential now.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm good enough.
Okay. So do I hear the general consensus that this is, okay, then I'll leave it in the edit document. And we can move on to chapter five, housing and neighborhoods. So I did email council and asked them to come with specific recommendations. I've got for reference, if you have a page number you'd like me to pull up, I've got the high-resolution version of our comp plan here. I've also got, do I get this thing off of my screen? Get out of there? Okay, I've also got the version with public comments. So if you have, if you'd like me to pull up a specific comment from a member of the public, please tell me what PDF page that's on from the comment version of the document and I can pull it up quickly. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to try to move quickly. We've got chapter five up on the screen. And I invite commissioners or council members to steer this conversation so we can start making desired edits.
Page ninety-one. You want me to just?
Sorry, that's what happens when you don't enforce your shoveling of the sidewalk policy.
Page ninety-one.
Okay, on page ninety-one of the comment document or the uncommented document?
The comprehensive document is fifty-two.
Okay, thank you.
It's ninety-one on the big comment.
Okay, page fifty-two. Is there a comment you'd like to draw attention to?
Yes. The one on page fifty-three. A citation with date should be attached to the fifteen percent. Tremendous amount of multifamily development underway in town. Helpful if the city planning department could monitor the status of affordable housing units on an ongoing basis. So our community stays current and proactive with this issue.
Yes, what's here?
And also on the next page, just those, the prices, those rents, they're not right anymore. It needs to be updated. The costs.
Okay, so comment number?
Seventy-nine. It was hers.
Yes, you're saying?
Well, it says around fifteen percent of housing in Sandpoint is vacant. Is that still? What's the date? She wants to know the citation date of that. I think all these numbers have changed since this was drafted, right?
There's probably lots of facts that have changed since we started this comp plan four years ago.
Yeah.
Well, the comp plan was written between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-four, so if we're going to try to update every fact in here for the final version, I think that's going to take some, a lot of time.
Okay.
So I would, I would.
I think the comment has validity, though.
Yeah.
Put a date or take the number out? I don't know. As of twenty-twenty-two?
Right, the citation date when that was taken.
Because the other ones talk about a specific study, I think, whereas that one just.
This one says, yeah, two thousand and ten. That was her point.
So the comment is?
Add a date.
Citations.
Add a year.
Right.
And you're referring specifically to the data around fifteen percent.
Right. That was where she started.
Oh.
And that would be the same with close to thirty.
Oh, it's, oh, the bubble's hiding in. I see. Okay.
Yeah, so just Sandpoint has a lot of law, fifteen percent.
And I guess the rest of those must be the same.
Okay.
Chart eight? Eight.
Okay, next, edit.
And I think the same person was saying the same thing on page ninety-five.
Comment eighty-one?
Yeah. Eighty-two. No, eighty-one.
Thirty-five percent of all sandpoint households across all incomes are cost-burdened. So you'd like to see a, a date for which that data was?
Yeah, at the bottom it says in two thousand, up from two thousand and ten.
Yeah, the other one says twenty-twenty ACS estimated. Where's that?
Yeah, just to make those percentages.
Doesn't have a citation.
Real.
Okay.
Surely it's a moving target. You're never actually.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, and as soon as.
But at least if there's a date on there.
As soon as somebody looks at this in the future, it will be outdated again.
Yeah. You know, the time we finish this conversation tonight, it will be outdated.
Well, by the time we get this approved.
We'll all be.
We're gonna have to start again.
Okay, other comments or edits in the housing chapter?
Yeah.
Got one from the girl, was next to the mirror there.
Okay. Anything in neighborhoods?
There was something, I wrote notes. Exclude those that stockpile hazardous, flammable, explosive materials. Current home occupation regulations are quite restrictive and should be evaluated in light of.
Well, that's a code thing.
Yeah, that's, that's very much already in our code.
Okay.
Yeah. We're quite restrictive, and I, I learned all, all about that when my neighbor was running a welding business in his backyard.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, that that was quite illegal in a single-family residential neighborhood.
Safety, it's just a safety concern.
Okay, goals.
Uh, let's see, where to start?
Goal one.
Uh, yeah, goal one B, I'd like to remove the words "and" short term.
Goal one B says, all right, so goal one, a variety of quality housing types is available to serve a broad spectrum of housing types, of household types and age groups. And then B says encourage housing above retail and mixed-use and commercial centers for year-round and short-term housing options and to enhance community vitality.
And what was your suggestion?
To remove the words "and" short term. I've heard, I've got a lot of feedback, but nobody has said that we need to encourage more short, short-term housing options.
Do we not have a large seasonal workforce here, though?
Well, I think short-term and seasonal are two different things.
Not really. I mean, because seasonal, short-term, and that's during the season, three, four, or five months.
Right, and short-term is less than a month.
Well, it's, if you're Airbnb.
Thirty-one.
Did you say short-term housing for our season?
Something like that.
I do, I do get the point. I appreciate that. I don't think we need to draw any more like, any more short-term, no, I do around rental.
I'd be, I'd like to change in short-term to seasonal.
Yeah. I mean, is that going to be a moot point, though?
It's in a workforce.
Then that's just going to be a moot point.
Well, potentially, but we're not really pushing it out there, I don't, right?
So the proposal is to change the, the term short-term to seasonal. Seasonal definitely implies more that we're looking to accommodate our seasonal workforce. Short-term does have the sound of short-term rental. There is the question of, do we want to embrace a, a, a goal that encourages diversity of housing for the promotion of short-term rentals explicitly?
We do not.
Or is the goal to provide more housing for people who work in the season economy?
So seasonal work.
I think that was the premise behind that language.
Short-term was implying more.
Yes, it wasn't, yes, it wasn't for Airbnbs.
That's not the meaning that you take from short-term, though. I agree with Kyle.
So are, are we, are we all okay with changing short-term to seasonal?
I know.
Okay. To enhance community vitality.
Yep.
And then on A, I, there were lots of comments about the regulation size. The ADUs are not like the homes. I don't know how that fits. Scale, height, character, privacy of neighbors and home values of neighbors. Issues with ADUs. A lot of comments on that, and I'm facing one right now, actually.
That's all code as well.
It is, okay.
There was one point I had sort of along that same line, and I was actually going to suggest that we add goal one F. And that would be explore alternatives to parking requirements, because if you read through a lot of those comments and a lot of the conversations I've had with people in the community, one of the biggest issues that people have with these large buildings going up is the height. And one of the reasons they're so tall is that they sit above a ground-floor garage. And the reason they have to have a ground-floor garage is because we require off-street parking. So rather than outlawing potential. Potential affordable housing, why don't we just explore alternatives to the parking requirements?
If I can jump in there, we have discussed it with planning and zoning and, um, Amy was working us toward that. We actually. Discuss the height, the changing the size limit down from nine hundred to. Seven hundred or nine fifty to seven hundred. We talked about all that, taking out the parking requirement, keeping it whatever, and, um. We were on our way and that has been halted.
And it hasn't come to council.
No. It hasn't even, we haven't even finished.
You're talking about with, with.
With ADUs.
Family?
No.
I think you're talking about multifamily, or you're talking about ADUs in particular.
ADUs.
ADUs.
So we've been in those discussions and actually we are making a lot of head, headway and those have stopped for.
But you gotta also, also keep in mind that. The parking requirement for ADUs is not that you have to build a garage underneath your ADU, it's that you have to have one on the street parking site for your ADU. So if you eliminate that requirement, you know, freeing up more of each individual property for larger ADUs.
And so we were in the process.
It had a knock on effect is what I'm saying.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, I mean, I'm not negating it.
No, but it's code. I mean, I don't think it belongs in the, in the comp plan because that's just code stuff.
Yeah, that.
Um, that.
Right, but I'm not suggesting a specific code. I'm suggesting that we have a goal to explore alternatives to. Our parking requirements so that we don't have these unintended consequences of. Too high of buildings that otherwise could be useful housing in our community. So I, I love that you guys are already talking about it and, and making headway on that, but I still think it, it deserves a place in the comp plan.
P O A twenty three dash zero 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 one is what it is.
I think what I was saying is that our code doesn't currently require that you build a garage and build an ADU. So that's something that private property owners are deciding to do because they want a garage. It ob- obviously adds significant cost to put a garage beneath an ADU.
It's because I can go thirty five, I can go higher.
Parking spot.
Yeah, yeah. In a multifamily neighborhood, they could go thirty five feet anyway, and there's certainly single family homes that don't have garages that are that high, but. Um. Like I said, looking through the comments. Attached to goal one A there, as well as conversations I've had with the community. The primary issue is the height, not the, the, um, existence of an ADU, and so. Um. It occurred to me that exploring alternatives to parking requirements could be. A remedy that wouldn't outlaw anybody's ability to build an ADU and in fact, create more opportunity for. These alternative types of housings that have proven to be successful.
And then you, then you run into the, um, the argument, which we also have heard a lot of both sides. That you don't have enough street parking.
Sure.
To begin with. So now you're gonna clog it with not having a required parking spot in the alley for ADUs. So I mean, then you hear that. I mean, it's, like I said, eight months, we've been having, having those discussions that have been halted for eight months as well.
Yeah.
So it's, um.
It does, I, I would suggest that the solution to the problem you're describing probably lies more in zoning ordinances, not in the comp plan.
Right.
Cause the, the comp plan articulates the desire to incentivize, you know, creative ways to increase density. Traditionally, in traditional neighborhoods.
Right, one of which would be exploring alternatives to parking requirements.
But your, your suggestion is to, is to explore alternative parking requirements to incentivize shorter building heights. Or to make it possible.
One incentive, yeah.
But if the goal is lower building heights, that could be addressed through code.
It could, but then you would be reducing the building heights for all of the buildings. In a multifamily neighborhood and then restricting the heights that somebody could build, say, an apartment complex.
So no, this is specific. Code is specific to ADU. So ADU, ADUs have a specific, a different code.
Right. Yeah, I get that.
Could the goal be something with height instead of the parking? And or ADUs, right? Because that's what you're hearing in the community right now, right? It's the, the varying heights of these, of the newer construction that's coming in.
Yeah, they're, they're all built on.
In fact, I think there's a. Maybe a goal to keep more of the community character, uh, when it comes to height in these neighborhoods.
Zach's thoughts?
So I think it is important to keep, keep in mind that this is the thirty thousand foot.
Yeah.
And when the things we are talking about are code and we are balancing community interests, like we might discuss. Parking on the street and the height of the ADUs. So I think what's important to keep in mind here is what, I mean. Kind of a rough idea of what we want is something to say something to the effect of, like, um, Councilor Dick was just saying, um. Keep it in effect, keep it, uh, balanced with community interests and, and the current neighborhood standards or something like that. But we don't need to, whether or not parking requirements is included in this, isn't gonna impact the code. That's, that, that is a question for later day. And that is for the ordinances themselves.
And really, my, my goal wouldn't be affecting code at all. It would just be instructing city staff to explore the possibilities. Of alternatives.
Sure, uh, I guess my point is I, I don't see any harm in including it, but I don't think it's, it's necessary just purposes of, of this housing, so. I think kind of to keep things moving, take a poll of how council feels about it, if council likes it.
I'll, I'll just say for the record, Mayor Grimm has arrived to the meeting. Welcome, Mr. Mayor Grimm.
Uh, thanks. How's it going?
Good.
Oh, good.
Discussing. Language around a variety of quality houses.
Excellent.
So do we have a suggested, um, F addition that would say something in the realm of like.
Explore alternatives to parking requirements.
That doesn't, and that doesn't really touch the character, the scale, the height, the privacy issue, doesn't really touch the issues with ADUs.
Right, which would be developed in colors.
That seems a little specific towards, like, one particular problem is, is my concern because if. Are, are you, are you hearing concern in the community that the city should perhaps not be requiring, um. An off street parking site for an ADU?
I'm not.
I haven't even heard a complaint about the height of anything.
Oh, I have. And the character, what they look like, they're not, you can't even tell what the, the ADU is and what the home is anymore.
Why is that a problem?
Because.
That's subjective.
Well, that's part of, that's in the comp plan to keep our neighborhoods, look, character.
So how would an ADU looking different from a house matter?
Because it's in somebody's backyard and it's.
Their property, yeah.
Exactly, I understand that, but there are neighbors that had privacy before those were put up there. With balconies looking into their backyards. I'm just saying, that's a lot.
I understand that, but.
Okay.
There's a.
I understand, but there has to be something.
But is that, is, is this where we deal with this right now?
Well, I, I think the question is, we have goal, um, you know, um, objective A under goal one is pursue diversity in housing types. I'm hearing some sentiment that we do not want to encourage diversity in housing types. We want to encourage housing that looks like. The housing that's already in the neighborhood.
That's in the comp plan in many places to keep the character of the neighborhoods.
Are these values in conflict with each other, from, from promoting diversity of housing types while also preserving the character of existing neighborhoods?
Yeah, that, that's the question, right?
Yeah. So.
I mean, don't get me wrong, nobody wants, I don't want people looking by backyard, but that's, I'm choosing to live in a town where everything's.
Page fifty.
A multifamily neighborhood where the height limit is.
Yeah.
Some feet. So again, is that a planning and zoning issue? We can do it later.
But well, the value, the, remember, the comp plan is a statement of our values as a community. So you as representatives of the community need to decide, do we value promoting diversity with the objective of increasing affordability? Or do we value preserving community neighborhood character at the expense of allowing taller ADUs in backyards? Of allowing houses that don't maybe look like the houses that are already in the neighborhood, because those are to some extent conflicting values.
If I may, if you read A, pursuing diversity in housing types. That subject right there is, it, the subject is the different types, not the character, not the height. It's just talking about what you can add. Um, it's not about, I mean, it's about the ADUs detached duplexes. It's not touching base.
Said every time a cottage development comes through or a new ADU, those are the developments that. People are complaining about.
Right, and that's why we have those standards that we were working on, that have halted.
I'm, I'm up to speed now. Was there a proposed language that was, um, brought forward?
There were many comments about the regulation, the size, and maybe it is the code that people are talking about. That they're not like the homes in the neighborhood. The ADUs that are being built do not blend in. They are not the same character. Um, the same scale, the height, privacy of the neighbors. And the value of neighbors' homes is what I was reading in the comp, plan comments.
So did you have language you wanted to propose to see?
Don't know how to do that.
So, real quick, what is character? Is that like this type of siding people use? Like, I have an old house. I'd love to update it, but now I can't because of.
It's, it's in, it's in the comp plan many places, so I'm not.
I understand that, but what's the definition of character of the neighborhood? Is it building heights? Is it?
Size, a. I think speaking to actual fabric and design, it's, it's something that, that blends, that doesn't stick out.
So I can't paint my house pink.
Of, well, we don't regulate paint colors, right?
Yeah, but that'd be out of character.
It, it ar- arguably would be, yeah. Um, so, um, just for historical relevance, you, are you aware that we did? Um, when the AD ordinance was originally adopted, we did have very stringent requirements that it had to match. The primary structure, uh, trim, design, architecture, scale, all that had to match. And in the past eight years, that was removed because of public concern and comment that it was too restrictive. So here we are now.
Changed it. Things public has changed their minds.
Oh, well, well.
Well, what can you say? What they say, what's been.
We've seen a historic growth in the construction of ADUs because we've made it easier and more affordable to build ADUs. And that's, that fulfills the goal that we outlined in our two thousand twelve. So.
And listen, they have four comments here. We have a count of ten thousand. We're.
Okay, fine. Code, we'll do it in code. How about E? It says less than five thousand square feet for single family housing. I thought we said five thousand. Not less than last time we met. Is that the same thing?
That was a point of discussion.
I thought we said that.
Yeah, five thousand. I, I mentioned that we've gone from ten to five and now we're going even potentially less. Um, at what point do you impact that same character and do we start to radically change the fabric of the neighborhoods that we live in?
Didn't we last time we met change that?
There's the comment that was.
To not less than, but to five thousand?
Right there.
Yeah.
Point one.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm just saying, so in E, it says less than five thousand. So if we've changed that before, shouldn't this change?
Well, we haven't changed this yet. We're going through it. It hasn't changed it, so that's an excellent point.
Okay.
Councilwoman Ducat, uh, that this area, this sentence needed to be highlighted to reflect, um. The previous discussion on lot sizes.
It's just that, yeah, they conflict.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's why we're doing this.
All right.
So would it make sense to encourage development of single family housing on small parcels as small as five thousand square feet? Um. Or down to five thousand square.
I think, I think that's.
Do we even need a number? Can you just say small parcels?
I think, uh, that would work, small parcels.
Cause there's gonna be non-conforming lots that are less than.
Within traditional medium density neighborhoods.
Five to seven.
I think you even take out the parcel size. Just encourage infill development, single family houses within traditional and medium density neighborhoods.
Uh, do you mind repeating that?
Encourage development of single family housing, um, within traditional and medium density neighborhoods.
Are we okay with that, everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Hmm.
And?
Just straight, uh.
Within tradition, within traditional and what?
Medium density neighborhoods.
We'll get that.
Okay.
Alright.
I would like to. Get a yes or no on the number F about the parking requirements before we move on.
F.
There is a nap on the heat.
Can I repeat your language?
Uh, explore alternatives to parking requirements. You missed about a fifteen minute. So that.
Uh, is your goal to?
Goal one of, a variety of housing types available to a broad spectrum of household types and age groups.
Yeah. So is your goal, you, you want more off street parking or just for microtext?
It would be to explore the alternatives to parking requirements so that we can provide a variety of housing types. Available to a broad spectrum of households and age groups.
Because what he was saying was since they can't park on the street, they're building garages on the bottom and so they're taller ADUs. So if they didn't have, have a garage on the bottom.
Parking requirements are.
Well, they don't have to be garage parking.
I get that. We had a long discussion about that.
And then the discussion was that they're not.
Dictating the type of development, the housing types that can happen. So I'm not trying to dictate code here. I'm just saying, instruct staff to explore alternatives.
Yeah, um, just, and just, I'll just add on this one for context. It used to be two per, uh, residential unit. We dropped it to one point four in two thousand and. It's been eleven maybe-ish, um, and that rounds down when you're doing multifamilies or up wherever you're at. But they did do a significant reduction of off street parking, so we've already backed off of where we were. Um, but, uh, again, this is, this is goal oriented. If it's not in here, um, somebody could question why the mayor or the staff. Or the planning commission is pursuing it. So I'd say if you want it to be explored and pursued, um, put it in here and you'll hear from the public. When this comes to public hearing, um, whether they like it or not.
I, I would point out one possible, um, consequence of this and a, a current example is a development that's in the pipeline. With a hundred and eleven or a hundred and thirteen multifamily units. Um, the parking requirement of one point four rounds down the develop, the, the, the proposal includes one hundred and eleven parking sites. And in the neighborhood around this development, there is no off street parking. It's adjacent to highway two. You can't park on the highway and both the local streets are too narrow for any off street parking. So there's real concern. That are already very low parking requirements in that zoning district are going to create a nightmare. There's no guest parking. Available in this development. One car per unit. These units are two and three bedrooms. And they're literally.
One car.
Be able to park anywhere near where they live if every parking spot's taken. So eliminating off street parking. Reducing it to where it is now is already gonna create some pretty major headaches for that neighborhood. Um, where those residents are gonna have to park several blocks away.
The goal is not to eliminate or reduce off street parking. It was to explore alternatives to.
Okay.
So you, you've made that, put that out there? Did, was there consensus out there?
Do we, um, want to direct, do we want to include that in our final draft or is that?
Yeah, and the way I like to ask it is, if that were in there, would anyone not be able to vote for the comp plan?
I'm sure we'll complain about it.
Like, well, I'm.
It would not stop.
I don't want that, but.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of this as well. Uh, uh, but it's, it's not gonna stop me. I'm thinking, we're gonna hear it from the public when it comes to the final public hearing anyway. So we can have more lengthy debate when it comes to that.
It's like you've, there are no objections or I can't support the comp plan if this isn't there. And we may come to points like that. There were many in oh nine.
Hey, goal two.
Goal two, housing affordability. Any edits we'd like to see there?
Somebody would like to add a bullet or a, a letter F, I guess, monitor housing inventories. To ensure the community stays proactive with demand and supply. And hers was eighty five, number eighty five.
Okay, we probably already do that, but it, there's, there's no.
Amy was doing that.
Yeah.
She would give us reports.
Oh, we're gonna do, we do quarterly development pipeline reports, council. Um, that's a little different than inventory. Inventory is what's out there. The pipeline is what's coming.
Well, no, do that as well.
So.
Inventories. Active with current demand and supply.
It's, it's, I would also point out that it's not. It's well beyond the scope of city government to ensure that the community stays proactive with demand. So why we don't build housing?
Okay. Just sharing.
I had a comment for two B.
Stop me from voting for that.
So two B said encourage workforce housing through density bonuses and. I would like language, something along the lines of other regulatory flexibility. I don't know exactly how to word that. But why are we calling out density bonuses and not any other type of flexibility, um, when I think we should be?
Yeah, I, I heard a great line from someone I'm gonna use this week, um, as allowed by law. Encourage workforce housing as allowed by law. It kind of covers you to explore. Um, we know that the law always changes and we know there's some barriers right now to incentivize. Barriers right now to incentivizing and participating that as a city. Um, so that sort of covers it as allowed by law.
Is, is workforce housing a, a fairly? Well understood and defined in the comp plan? I mean, i- is, is there something about workforce housing? Everybody understands that when you give somebody the benefit of whatever it is we might do someday for workforce housing, that it stays. Workforce housing during, that it's enduring, yeah. Is it, is, is there something now that, first of all, tells everybody? This is what workforce housing is, and if that's what you got approved for, that's what it must remain. Right? I mean.
We define it in our comp plan, but.
Ever since I ran for government, I've been trying to figure out what that means.
Well, there's, there's nationally accepted definitions. It's housing that is, represents no more than thirty percent of the. The AMI for somebody between six, sorry. No more than thirty.
Sounds like low income.
One of the affordable index, but the workforce refers to eighty to a hundred percent of the area median income. That's your like typical workforce. So people who fall low income is below sixty percent of AMI. The workforce is people between, what, sixteen, a hundred and twenty?
I think you're talking low income versus affordable housing. Workforce, as other communities have in our, you know, other resort communities like us have. Defined it are workers who do work in the community and other communities have addressed this through deed restrictions. From what you're saying is, how do we ensure that this is actually going to workforce? And I think that's a very valid question. And so something we can do is offer flexibility in some of our design standards. If they have a enduring deed restriction that says that this must be. Rented or sold to someone who is working in the community and we can define what the community is, whether it's the county or the city limits, but.
It'd have to be voluntary.
It definitely would, yeah.
Voluntary, city can enforce that. We, we had this conversation and I thought that was very good. The other thing too is the, the other issue is, okay, how long do they have to work here? What if they get fired? You know, things like that.
That would need to be worked out, but other communities have and it's not, there's, there's.
Well, I mean, one, one, in my mind, a clear example, and pardon if I'm wrong, didn't Schweitzer build a bunch of housing off of? Whatever that is behind the mall out there. And Schweitzer owns it and they. They lease it to the people who work at Schweitzer, I assume. That's to me workforce housing. It's not owned by somebody who might sell it to their uncle who decides he wants to live in Sandpoint now. You know, this is for people who work at Schweitzer.
And, and actually, I believe we have city employees now, like, working, living there, which is.
Oh, it's not.
So I think that encourage workforce housing as allowed by, by law covers it. The, the, the details and the fine. The fine-grained details of how this comes about, it would go to the planning. So Commissioner Torpe, it would come to the planning commission for crafting that ordinance. Then there would be great discussion about what qualifies, what are the incentives, what does the law allow? That would then trickle up to the council for similar debates before um, it were put into process and code. So, um, again, this just gives us the, the justification to work on it if. If we can knock all these things out in the next ten years.
And as we move forward, you can just keep in mind that this is our constitution. The US constitution is like thirty-three hundred words, so, so keeping a little bit of ambiguity in here is a good thing. Then it allows the planning, the current planning and zoning commissions and, and, and city councils. To apply this without having to amend it, without having to dive into it. With where we're, with what we want, with our goals now. So when we dive into what is affordable housing, it can kind of just mean. The common definition of affordable housing too, I mean, just for example, so it's, it's, it's okay if there's a little bit of ambiguity in this document.
What's affordable to one is not somebody else.
I did just propose a change, well, Ma- Mayor Graham proposed a change, encourage workforce housing through various means as allowed by law to amend. Objective B, that is less, far less specific than density bonuses, so that kind of.
Density bonuses can certainly be one of them, yeah.
Are we okay with that change, everybody? There is still this objective which might be left over from. Previous effort to form a housing authority. Does anybody want to?
I did have that one, but you're skipping two C. I've got one on two C. I'd like to remove the word accessory. I think it's unnecessary. It's an unnecessary accessory.
They're accessory to a primary, uh, it's, it's kind of a.
But why do we?
Ineffective, um. Statement in my opinion.
Oh, cause that's what they're called, accessory.
You said ineffective?
Ineffective.
Okay.
Cause we allow ADUs now. They are accessory to a primary structure and we talk about encouraging infill in our neighborhoods of smaller, of more housing. But um, I don't, I don't think it affects it.
Could we get rid of accessory units? Just in, integrate and smaller, just integrate infill? This, this whole objective seems a little redundant.
It does feel redundant in my opinion as well, but.
Integrate smaller infill units to allow for mixed income residents. I think that's.
What's, what's a mixed income resident? I've never seen. That term anywhere in the literature before. Does anyone know?
I, it might be worded poorly, but I, I take it to mean. A varie- uh, residents of a variety of. Different incomes, not one resident that has mixed incomes.
Across a wide range.
Could certainly reword that if you have a suggestion.
This is probably the bad kind of ambiguity.
Just like, well, I get some of my income from stocks and some of it from my job, so I mixed income.
I mean, I think when we look at the intent of this larger goal two. Um, to meet the needs of low and moderate income households. I, I guess. I, I don't see how C really, really hits that, but.
Well, I think it's if you have a neighborhood that's entirely two to three thousand square foot houses. This is integrating smaller infill units to allow those low and moderate income households.
But at the end of the day, we don't build housing. So how do we integrate? I guess that's the question is. Just the, it's the code that would allow, and we already allow that. Through ADUs.
An objective that integrates smaller infill units is by implication. Achieved through code, so I don't think we need to include the language around code, but. I, I'd suggest we just move, remove the word accessory and move on, cause I think although it's not. A very clear turn, a phrase, mixed use or mixed income residence is widely understood by most people to meet people of different.
Especially when it's in the goal of low and mid, moderate income.
So, can I suggest we, we move on? Um, any other objectives in goal two?
Yeah, for D, as you pointed out, I'd like to remove housing authority, um. I'd like to revise it to say coordinate regionally on a housing action plan. Focused on housing strategies for low and moderate income populations and then. Get rid of the rest of it.
Would you read that one more time?
Sure. Coordinate regionally on a housing action plan focused on and then housing.
But not through a housing authority.
It could be a housing authority, but let's start with a housing action plan to decide whether the housing authority is the correct.
So we don't, we would not want to say through a housing authority.
Correct, yeah, we'd get rid of that part.
Just read that for me, I'm sure that's what you're suggesting.
Last words on.
Yep, that's perfect, thanks.
Any objections? You know, changes to goal two?
I'd like to add number F. Consider alternate impact fee structures to promote diversity of home sizes and types.
Just repeat that, please.
Uh, consider alternate impact fee. Structures to promote diversity of home sizes and types. Am I giving an example? Well, right now, our impact fee structure says if you're zero to three bedrooms, you pay one fee. And if you're four or more bedrooms, then you pay a higher fee.
And if you're multi-family, a different fee.
Right, so naturally, if you're building a home and trying to maximize your profit, you're gonna say, well, I'm gonna build up to the, the three. And get the most I can and pay the least impact fees. So if we. Consider other ways of collecting impact fees, maybe we will end up with more one and two bedrooms and less three bedrooms that people can't afford. Being under goal two of housing. And again, this is considered, I'm not.
So like a regressive impacts fee schedule that decreases in percentage, the more units you build.
I didn't say that.
But you want to incentivize more multifamily, right? So whereas.
No, it's per bedroom. So it, it would incentivize smaller units.
I got, you're right, and more units. So whereas you could build a threeplex, if we have an incentive structure that makes it cheaper to build per unit for that fourth unit. You might be inclined to build a fourplex instead.
No, I'm talking about the impact fee for one unit. If you pay, if you build up to three bedrooms, you pay the same rate. So now we're, we're building a lot of three bedrooms when maybe the market would demand one and two bedrooms. But we as a government are incentivizing the builders to build three bedrooms because of our impact fee structure.
That's, um, for me, it's a, it's a consideration and it's something we can explore that's in here.
Sorry, are you in favor of more three bedrooms or fewer three bedrooms?
I just don't think we should have an arbitrary cutoff at three bedrooms. I don't have anything against three bedrooms for the record.
But you're saying because of the impact, the fee schedule.
It creates an artificial incentive to.
And maybe there aren't, it's not affordable for people to buy a three bedroom.
That means there's less one and two bedrooms.
Three bedrooms do house more people than one and two bedrooms.
Right, that's my concern is what about people with kids and? Well, there's no disincentive to build three. And again, I'm not proposing a code change, I'm just saying, let's consider alternatives. Maybe there's a better way to do it. We don't know unless we consider it.
Okay, any objective to this?
Benign.
Can I ask, did, did uh, anyone have concerns about the language of this goal, housing is available to meet the needs of low and moderate household, income households? Um, and, and I bring that up in the sense that. I've always struggled and I haven't landed my ship, but um, that. It's really our job as a city to ensure that our government entities and our businesses can. Uh, have housing available, you know, to meet their needs and to meet the needs of, you know, schools, fire, police, whatnot. And the way I read this, it almost suggests that it's our responsibility to make sure anyone who has lower moderate income. Uh, should be able to find housing in our community and I, I'm not sure that I feel like that's the city's responsibility. Um, or goal, I, I feel like. I don't know, uh, d- does that make sense to come across to anyone? I, I was thinking more something along the lines of ensuring that, um. Housing is available to meet the needs of our, our businesses and government operations. Uh, you know, in terms of stat, employees for our business and, and governments, um. Again, I, I feel like with it, as it's worded, and I might need to come back to this for the final hearing, um, if it's not a. A significant change, it just, as it's worded, I read this, you could read this in a way where it feels like it's our obligation or our, uh. Our directive to make sure that there's unlimited, anyone needs to have, uh, anyone who wants to move to Sandpoint can find moderate. Uh, or low, um, um, affordable housing if you're low or moderate income.
They will not.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the question. And, you know, we, we, we've been having this conversation since, you know, I got elected. I'd love to move to Tahoe, but is it Tahoe's job to make sure that I can afford to live there? Or I'd love to live Palm Springs, we just visited beautiful, is it their job to make sure that? Anybody can afford to live there and that's the question, is that the government's job?
Doesn't say it's our job.
I would only make one point looking down the future here with where we're at and the collapsing birth rate that we have. Across the entire world specifically with Sandpoint. If we're not having children to come into our workforce, we are going to be relying on as many people to come move here. That we possibly can to fill those voids one way or another. So where I totally agree with you, it is not the government's job to. Figure out how every economic, socioeconomic group can come in here. I, I think we do need to start looking at strategies to make sure that we have as much housing as we can possibly get. To sustain a, a vibrant, um, diverse economy.
Would, I, I was saying, would it work if we struck households, the last word households, to workers?
Yeah.
Housing is available to meet the needs of low and moderate income workers?
Yeah.
In my mind, that, that has at least a tie into their people who are working.
Yeah, right.
Or workforce.
Yeah, I'd be fine with either.
We have to def- define it.
We do say workforce in number B, so I think that's appropriate.
So what's the proposed?
Strike household and add, replace it with workforce in goal two.
Can you give me the language you'd like?
Housing is available to meet the needs of low and moderate income. I, I think workers is more straightforward. And I, I have to respond to you, uh, Councilman Dick, um, is it gonna be robots? I don't know.
I don't wanna move in any robots.
All right, let's go on to goal three.
And here's that character.
Goal three, the charm and comfort of sand points.
Cause it's all through here, character. How you define that? Are protected and enhanced, the charm and comfort of sand points existing. And enhance.
I would say under C, as allowed by law. Continue to manage short-term rentals as allowed by law. Manage, to mitigate adverse impacts, um, if you followed it, we almost lost our right this year to.
Can, on E, can we put all neighborhoods? There's several places where people have wanted all so that it's not focused on a single neighborhood. A start neighborhood or.
Maintain the historic ar- architectural integrity of, of our neighborhoods.
All neighborhoods.
Doesn't it say of neighborhoods?
It doesn't, it says of neighborhoods.
Which go, which objective are you looking at? Maintain the historic architectural integrity of.
That's what I was thinking, but.
Yeah, implies all of them.
I think the comment was about number B where it says existing neighborhoods. And the commenter was saying, why just the existing ones?
Also that.
Yes, there isn't historical.
That's where you can take out existing and put all. Oh, yeah, there's several places that it was requested. Put it there too.
So for B, we wanna say of all neighborhoods. Right, not just existing.
That's the proposal, yeah.
All existing neighborhoods. Just to be inclusive. Of all neighborhoods.
And E, you want that to say of all neighborhoods instead of just of neighborhoods?
Please.
One project to that addition.
Then is I a place to put with incentives for the neighborhood tree canopies? Incentivize again to maintain and enhance. And I did send Erica, um, a proposal from. On GADIS.
Yeah, you could, you could add incentivize.
Either there or um, goal for new neighborhoods or both, cause one's existing and one's new. So to foster quality neighborhood tree canopies with incentives for new neighborhoods and. So to foster quality neighborhood tree canopies with incentives for new neighborhoods and for existing neighborhoods.
Yeah, I thought there was a comment that gave pretty specific language about providing flexibility for the preservation of.
Yeah, in dimension requirements and placement of structures to preserve tree canopies.
Well, let's, let's just stay in orderly here, we're on I.
Okay.
I heard you wanted to say maintain incentivize, maintain.
And enhance.
Neighborhood tree canopies through incentives.
Through incentives, thank you.
So that's, I believe, Councilwoman Duquette's suggestion, any objection?
Nope, no, I think that that covers the flexibility as well. That could be considered incentive, right?
It was Jason.
And so in new neighborhoods, I, I don't.
Anything else under goal three?
Nope, sorry. Brushing. Anybody?
Go to goal four.
Set community values. Character.
Yeah, I don't know, you.
I'm quitting. What's that?
Requiring a new development to emulate historic neighborhoods is going to be tough.
That's all subjective, right?
Yeah. I guess.
Unless you have the um, quality control person that goes around.
And so Mayor Grim, where would you, if, if somebody, if someone wanted um, things like the, the new buildings to be, and I've mentioned this before, with more um, environmental choices, is that, is that here or other places?
Yeah, no, this would be a great spot, new neighborhoods, you could add F something to the effect like um.
Greener, greener choices, and I know that turns people off when you say that.
And I, I, I don't wanna just put this phrase everywhere, but as allowed by law. Incentivize green innovative building design.
Innovative, yeah.
We should just put a disclaimer at the front of the company that says we will not do any.
Unless, unless otherwise, nobody.
Yeah.
All goals will be.
So encourage.
It would be nice if, if developers thought about like um, electric instead of gas or natural gas or propane, because that's.
Yeah, heat pumps, white roofs, all sorts of.
Except that, right, yeah.
Yeah.
And so how do we put that?
Just add F, uh.
Okay.
Encourage um, green building and energy efficient design.
Okay, thank you.
Is that what you would like to suggest?
I would like to suggest that, short and sweet. Covers.
Green building and energy efficient design.
Because, yeah, just, that's where we have to go. In new developments, hard to change old houses to that.
Okay.
What do you think about that, Council Dick?
I am not a fan of it, but I would certainly put it in there.
As allowed by law, Justin.
We, we have some varying, uh, I, I certainly wouldn't wanna be in an electrical complex when the grid goes down and I'll be driving my combustible engine vehicle down the road. Well, the rest of them aren't, but I'm, I'm totally open for it as well too. I think it is great to push, let's, let's try to push the developers to do what they can. I don't necessarily think it's all illegal, I think Taylor and Sons has done some great design out there with their hydronic floor heating with the spent oil as well as the um, what are those lights? Yeah, they're, they've also got the canopies with the natural lights in there to take out of using electricity as well.
They also have Bonner County's only level three vehicle charger, which rural residents are already charging the electric vehicles to bring home as backup power supplies in case of a power outage.
And that's what I would like your places to is EV parking, but we're not there yet.
So, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Commissioner, I appreciate that.
Um, did you capture that, that statement?
I did.
Director?
Yep.
Um, anyone have any uh, heartburn over that addition?
Yeah, I do, but not because of that.
You can still vote for it.
Okay, uh, any other pros and cons to goal four? Can we move on to the next chapter?
We have public comment and maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, with, any public comment on chapter four, uh, housing in neighborhoods before we move on to, oh, I'm sorry, chapter five? Yes, Greg, Mr. Flynn.
Okay, um, if you wanna.
The tree incentive guy anyway.
No, it's okay.
Okay. He's got some stuff to pass out, I think most of you have seen it before. The two-sided thing. The, the side with the dark blue bands is what I wish to speak to. Chapter five. Add to goal three. Maintain and enhance neighborhood tree canopies and when reasonable accommodations can preserve heritage trees, provide flexibility in design standards and placement of structures.
And I did read that part about design.
And below that, appendix B. We need a definition of heritage trees. And this is language researched and taken from policies of other um, tree policies of other communities. So this is, it is simple, simple language that the pictures that go with it are an example of some ancient trees that could be saved with said flexibility.
Instead of clearing a lot of all forestry, build around trees.
Well, not only that, I think, Mr. Flynn, you were, when you brought it up to planning and zoning, it was to affect if there was a big heritage tree um, and because, you know, you had to put a house, you didn't wanna have to take it down if it was, you know, the setbacks and.
It had to do with garage.
Yes.
Well, garage setback. What, what Reed and I designed and submitted to the owner was uh, what we, we called a carport. And it went under the second story of the unit he wants to build. The city said, no, no, that's a garage, so that has to start twenty-five feet from the property line, which puts it right in the middle of this triad of three hundred year old cedar trees, which we, we, our design calls for the central shared area of the three units that are, that are intended to be built. And it was, it's beautiful. And to, to arbitrarily require them to be cut is, is an example of where this flexibility in design standards and placement of tru- tru- structures is is what we're urging.
Thank you, um, Councilman, uh, Spiro had a question, I believe.
Uh, I mean, you kinda touched on it with the, I mean, we talked about this before, property rights, right? We have to be careful.
We're, we're allowed by law.
Right, of course. Uh, the, I, I heard a arbitrary with the setbacks, is that arbitrary? Could planning and zoning speak to that, the setbacks?
No, those are set.
Yeah, but it's not, you know, is it arbitrary or is there a reason?
No.
No, the, the, the garages are required to be set back twenty-five feet because when you have off-street parking, we had a problem where if they're close up and they're not covered garages, people park and block the sidewalk, then the sidewalk people get mad because the sidewalks are blocked, so.
Right, and, and I wasn't meaning disrespect, I know it's not arbitrary, I just wanna make sure for the public.
Yeah, so to Mr. Flynn's point, it was just like he said with the structure, they wanted to move the garage within the setback.
Yeah.
Uh, because of the big trees. So he's just asking for incentives or some sort of leeway, but, but code is code, so there really isn't leeway.
Language is pretty, pretty simple, we're not requiring anybody to do anything.
Right.
But, but allowing.
Just to make that consideration.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, somebody could come in today and ask for a variance from those standards if, uh, I mean, one of the three criteria is it's not owner-created. The fact that you have three hundred year old trees there is fault, wanna build a garage. I, I think there's flexibility in the code today, but I guess the question is, do you wanna jump back to goal three and does anyone uh, add this, this uh, recommendation?
So, yeah, when we talked about three I, we added the words. Remind me, Jason, what did we add to three I?
Uh, through incentives.
Through incentives.
I would say that this.
Design standards and flexibility on setbacks, which would be location of structures, would that be considered an incentive?
Yeah, maybe change that, I mean, enhancing every tree canopies through incentives and other accommodations.
Um, I would also point out that that language in the complaint doesn't mean that a variance would not be required in this case.
Right, right.
I mean.
But it.
Ultimately, of that, the approval of a variance is decided upon by planning and zoning commission. When there's extraordinary circumstances that inconvenience property owner or, you know, in this case, could help preserve an old growth cedar tree stand. I think it wouldn't be unreasonable for the planning and zoning commission to recommend the approval of a variance. But that, I would just point out that we have language in here that is, that emphasizes the community's value of protecting trees and tree canopies through incentives now. Um, to get specific down to the level of, you know, let's say our setback requirements don't apply in the case of old growth trees being affected, that's a little bit more specific than a complaint needs to be.
I think if you put through incentives and other accommodations, if I were representing somebody.
As allowed by law.
Incentives and other accommodations, if I'm representing somebody as a planner asking for a variance, I would pull this in from the complaint and say, look, this is why this variance is valid, your complaint speaks to it.
Sure. That, that, that's a really good point, yeah.
So that's sort of how this complaint would come to life in your daily life.
Does that make sense, Mr. Flynn? If, if the, if the complaint are clearly says that we value maintaining and enhancing neighborhood tree canopies through incentives and other accommodations, it's, it's vague enough that a, a, a planner in the future could come to planning and zoning, representing a, a client like yourself and say, hey, our complaint says we are to be accommodating to these sorts of requests.
I, I think you still need in the plan a definition of heritage trees, which this piece of paper offers, one that through research was taken from other communities defining heritage tree. And I think that's, that's a value. I also think that the uh, the language provided in this paper under add to goal three. It is simple, is simple enough, providing flexibility in design standards and placement of structures. You know, uh, whether.
To preserve.
Reasonable accommodations can preserve heritage trees. Like, when, when we went to the planning or when we went, took the plan we had to the, to the city, what Reed did. Uh, they said, no, that's a garage, I'm sorry, no, it's gotta be twenty-five feet back from the property line. And there was no, no flexibility at all.
So I think with this language that we just added, through other accommodations, if, if this person that you're referencing hired a qualified planner to come represent that variance, this language, as we just threw other accommodations, would be a very strong rationale for uh, arguing for variance to those standards. I think we've, we've probably covered it, but I know there's a section on uh, that we can address your definition uh, later in the appendix B. So um, I think we've kinda covered uh, those comments, are there other public comments? For chapter five before we move into six?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Manburg?
There's uh, someone online who'd like to speak.
Okay, let's hear it. Hello out there online.
Heather Flint Shadow.
Hi there. My name is Heather Flint Shadow, I'm an urban planner of more than twenty-five years and an environmental designer. Uh, can you hear me all right?
Yes. Yeah, Heather, can you just confirm, are you a City of Sandpoint resident?
No, I'm not, I'm a designer and urban planner in Portland, Oregon. Where in, in the last, um, I would say, very short time, we've lost eight hundred and twenty-three acres of our urban forestry canopy. Five hundred of those acres due to new development in residential areas. So I, I'm providing you a, a little bit of recommendation based on some cautionary recent development experience um, that, that really threatens the character and, and the economic vitality of your city. That really.
We lost you, Heather.
And I, and while you've got a, an example of one property, I would just say, it's not about one property. This is really, it's just a good case study of not having the tools that a planner needs and not having the, the resources that a a developer, a property owner would need to have certainty, because a variance is very expensive, time-consuming, and you're not sure it's actually gonna happen. So I would suggest that the language that we provided, it's not just about incentives, while I appreciate that. I would suggest that, that you need the language more specifically about um, flexibility and design standards as, as we've given it to you. Um, you certainly could say, in addition to in other incentives and accommodations, you could add that to it. But I really do think you need that language because it's not clear that there's even a goal or a willingness or desire to preserve heritage trees. It, it, you, you don't have the right tools in your toolbox for the planners or for property owners or for developers, it, you, you're just missing something essential. And you, and by putting it in here as a goal, you can then use the tools like Bonner County has done in the precedents that I've given you the research last summer, uh, Jason, I just emailed you the background research, I submitted to the planning commission. Um, so that policy language is there. There is an administrative variance pathway that Bonner County has put in their code that allows flexibility for um, unusual site conditions. And I would consider this to be one of those, and they have flexibility up to thirty percent. You don't have to get into that kind of detail, that can happen later in the policy. But I would strongly recommend that you need something like this that has that language for flexibility in design standards and placement of structures. Because even if a city planner wants to do something, everybody agrees, you don't have the tools you need and and I think the language is maybe, is, is well-intentioned, but maybe a little soft as proposed, so I, I would just strongly encourage that, that will give you a little bit more of the right kind of language to to sort of enshrining the goals that you, that you want. And it doesn't make anybody beholden to, to anything by having that in there, but it does give you better tools as a, as a planning agency.
Thank you, Heather, um, council, any uh, comment or action on those comments other than what we've done at this point?
A question for Heather, is this currently the code in Portland where you're working? Maybe you could speak to that, where, where are these other communities that, where this language has been taken from?
I wrote, I wrote this language for you specifically. As a professional planner.
Where are you?
The precedence, I, what was that?
Where are you currently working right now? What, what city are you working with?
I work with many cities, I work with cities on revitalization plans and design guidelines, um, on resiliency planning, on housing mixed-use development, I work on all kinds of uh, long-range planning and comprehensive development, and I've been a government planner and comprehensive planning.
Find the closest community that this language is most like?
I'd have to look for that, but I, I wouldn't say that that's not the precedent that I gave you, I would say you've got, the closest community you've got is Bonner County, which has, has, and I've, I've given you guys the code language already, um, which has a flexibility that as an administrative variance that you can do for unusual site conditions like this of up to thirty percent, but you don't need that kind of very detailed language in this comprehensive planning document, this is really about the goals, but what it does do is it. But what it does do is it gives you just a little bit of a reference and you can work out the policy, the standards later. But this gives you the the language that you need as a goal, so I would say Bonner County is one of your closest uh, precedents for that. That flexibility and then you also have another policy in um, in your code two or in the the comprehensive plan that talks about flexibility in accommodating new development in the ACI. So you uh, you know, I think we're looking at how you might have some parallel tools to accommodate new development within existing neighborhoods where you happen to have some of your oldest special trees.
It's I my question, is this a more appropriate conversation for chapter eleven natural resources?
I don't think so, I think this is about accommodating existing new housing and existing development, which is exactly the case study that is happening here where someone wants to add new to new houses. And we came up with an even better solution that would add to new houses and an ADU and would preserve the trees. And it just needed a, you know, a few feet of difference of accommodation, but the planner couldn't even do it, even though they might be interested and want to do it. You just don't.
Planner was working under our previous complan, which did not include language around incentivizing and accommodating.
Yeah.
Action of tree canopy, so I would suggest that the language we're putting in our updated complan would have provided the leeway for a future planner to do exactly what you're describing without getting into the very specific suggestions around design standards and setbacks that affected your particular.
I don't think you need to get into. Yeah, I don't think you need to get into.
Plan to include language that's specific to a very uh, particular case that you've been involved in.
No, no, it's it's not about a case, it's not about this, but I'm just saying you're going to have many more projects, many more uh, developments proposed and you and and it's not about an incentive because you don't have, you may or may not have the resources or the time or the energy to develop those incentives. So that's why you need just a a little bit more nuance is what I'm suggesting. So accommodations is a great start, but accommodations is really vague. So that's why I was just saying, if you said design sta- flexibility and design standards, I think you'd be covered.
By design standards, you mean setbacks.
Design standards in terms of where you put your building, where you place your structure, so you can you can be very general by saying design standards.
Well, we have very minimal design standards, um, but um, and and even those almost lost us the right to have any uh, at the legislature a few years ago, so.
You can work with the language however you want, but I I think you might just want to add just a little bit more to your idea about accommodations, I think that's a good idea. I just, I think you might need accommodate, it's it's really vague and that can mean a lot of different things. So I just think, you know, whether it's placement of structures.
I mean.
So I I loved your language.
Devils advocate, one of my, here's a, and and I I do that a lot, it's not necessarily how I feel. But I've got a lot that's got some trees on it and I'm a creative developer who knows a city council member or a tree commission member or mayor. And I think if I can get an accommodation to build really close two units. Um, um, sometime in the future, I could come maybe get a few more over here. So what I really need to do is just define fifteen random trees on this property as heritage trees, have the mayor go out and um, define them as such or the tree commission. Um, and then, you know, they're heritage trees and then someone else could say they're not heritage trees. I guess I I have a a broader concern about the definition of heritage trees, more from the sense of who's defining them, what defines them and, you know, how permanent are they when you're talking about investment of buildings and?
Have have you seen the precedent research that we shared with the city and that we've submitted multiple times as background?
No, I I have the anecdotal anecdotal experience of living in Sandpoint for seventeen years and watching a lot of development occur.
Yeah, and I I I think you you do have to be careful, you don't want to just open the door to anything, which is why the the administrative variance, I think, is a good one that that I I talked to the planner who who developed the administrative variance in twenty nineteen and they said the community was very excited and very supportive of it. But it does give you a very, a much more specific interpretation when you go to develop the code that supports this policy. So so you you can, you can really narrowly define what's allowed when you get to the the more detailed standards. But but what you don't have is the goal that puts it in place, that it's it's important. And then there's an that you want to provide.
For your comments, Heather, we we have um, development that's literally chomping at the bit. And uh, the only thing standing from um, us preventing the next heritage tree from coming down and um, that development from going up is us passing and moving forward with this plan. So with due respect, I am really motivated to keep moving on this plan. Um, uh, and I want to get it adopted so we can start working on our zoning. Uh, so uh, council, is there any um, I'll ask again, any desire to further amend other than our accommodation, other accommodation language right now?
I'm fine with the accommodation language.
I do like the language of flexibility and dimension and requirements because I understand that. But if accommodations for understanding that that's going to cover that.
I I think that's a question, um, Councilwoman Duquette, if you were sitting on the dais and someone said, your code says you should consider accommodations, I think a reasonable person would say, whether it's specific language about flexibility and design standards or administrative variances, those are accommodations.
Hey. But it does not guarantee passage.
What's that?
It does not guarantee that it would be passed, I'm just throwing that out there, just because it's in the comp plan that we're going to take considerations. It doesn't mean that as a planning and zoning board that or a council that it would be.
And adding the suggesting nation's language would not preclude the future applicant from having to go through the variance process.
Yeah.
So.
No, I uh, Heather, I do appreciate your comments and your expertise and your broad range of knowledge. I hope I don't come across too too skeptical, I just um, I want to get this thing adopted. Um, and I've given the council a couple of opportunities to change that, so. Um, I think we're, any other public comments, uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Let's try to keep it to three minutes if we can.
Maureen Ballard.
Hello, hello, City Council, can you hear me?
Ms. Maureen, can you let me know if you're a city resident or not?
I am a former city resident and a future city resident and it's a matter of months.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I I grew up in Sandpoint and I know the neighborhoods well and how they've changed since the early eighties. Um, and I don't have a lot of, you know, technical uh, experience in this field. Um, but I do have um, in reading the language that you had, Mr. Walker, previously as far as uh, incentives and accommodations, I I think that sounds great. Um, but I just want to say that I feel like in that word incentives, there's a lot of gray area there. And um, it it would behoove all of us to include uh, just the 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 notion of flexibility, um, because that I think would give city council much more leeway in how um, how developers could work around to preserve trees. Um, whereas incentives implies that there needs to be some sort of trade off. So there's like a lot more work implied with how it is presently stated. Um, and then just lastly, my my two senses that I don't understand why we can't include a clear definition for heritage trees in this document. Um, I agreed with you, uh, Mr. Grimm, that absolutely we need to get this um, finalized uh, so that we can preserve these trees, but having clear definitions is the first step in doing so. So um, uh, I would uh, just urge you to please consider those recommendations previously made and include a definition for heritage trees as well as afford us the future flexibility um, to uh, accommodate for preserving those trees when um, need be. So that's all I have to say, thank you for your attention.
Awesome, thank you so much and uh, good luck with your future move to Sandpoint and um, look forward to seeing you around and having you involved. Um, I think um, that definition, uh, appendix B, we can pick that up at that time. And that, any other comments, uh, Madam Clerk? Uh, regarding chapter five or wherever.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent.
Okay.
So one question, would flexibility make any difference with mining and so? I'm sorry.
I'm I'm thinking to myself, why don't we ask our attorney?
Yeah, I tried to, but I did it quite.
Accommodation versus flexibility, that was Black's law. Did you allow comments at the beginning of the chapter?
We did not, okay, yeah. Okay, um, on to chapter six, multimodal transportation. Uh, we pull up the comment document and I'll ask council to direct me to goals, objectives, any of the introduction that you'd like to discuss before we.
Director Walker, I'm getting a short break, process for a bathroom break.
Okay, let's take a take a four to five minute recess and come back. All right, welcome back, um, we are going to wrap this up at eight o'clock. We do have some folks who need to leave, so we will dive into chapter six, multimodal transportation. Um, do I have anyone who would like to suggest and edit the chapter six?
Yes, I would like to remove the first paragraph on page one eighteen referring to Great Northern Road.
Uh, which page of the document is that on?
Oh.
Of the of the complan, sixty two, sixty three?
Sixty six.
Sixty six. Yeah, the corridor of Great Northern Road from Baldy Mountain to Woodland Avenue serves a rapidly growing industrial area as well as forming a critical connection from the city center to areas north. And you'd like to re- re- remove which sentence?
The whole paragraph.
Okay, the street is undersized and lacks pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure. Although it is a major north south cycling corridor, a reconstruction of the rare roadway that meets the city's complete streets criteria will aid in forming a critical connection for multimodal users as well as improve accessibility for the growing industry in the area.
Can we get some more color on your thinking there?
Yeah, I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but um, I think it's a good example of projects that we shouldn't be doing. Um, I think that's one of the biggest issues that I have with the complete streets. Um, ordinance that we have is that it requires capital projects like this to build um, infrastructure that doesn't connect to anything on either side. And so we're we're here, we're touting that it's a a great bike route or will be with a a bike path, but then we'll be sending people down Baldy, which has no pedestrian infrastructure and on to Great, on to Woodland with no pedestrian infrastructure. Um, it's also, there's probably a half a dozen, maybe a dozen tops people that live on Great Northern. Um, whereas you'll find that many people living on a single city block here in Sandpoint. And so the idea that we're going to spend tens of millions of dollars rebuilding a road that um, benefits very few people. Um, is an example of a capital project that we shouldn't be focusing on. So I think that um, dedicating an entire paragraph to this is sort of the crown jewel of our transportation projects is the wrong thing to put into our complan.
Um, thank you, Councilman Schreiber, I I just want to sort of correct the record a little bit. Um, the uh, the region that region that's described by that is rapidly intensifying. We've got um, upwards of probably nine hundred homes uh, north of Woodland that use Great Northern. We've got twenty five acres of industrial land that's vacant right there and I've seen concept plans for uh, significant industrial, light industrial um, development there. So I think that area is definitely um, growing rapidly.
Um, when was this written?
This plan.
Yeah, this paragraph.
Uh, last year probably or the year before.
So rapidly growing sometime in the future, just not yet.
Next ten years.
Yeah.
We're going to be issuing certificates of occupancy for a hundred and thirty five new residences right here this year. And building permits have been issued for around fifty new residences right here. And then we're going to see a development application for another hundred and thirty five right here, probably sometime this year. So there will be over three hundred new uh, residences in the pipeline or opening this year, right here. So that's nine hundred people approximately could move in there or nine percent of the city's population.
At five and six trips per.
And the other ninety percent live on the other side of the airport, you know, where we're not spending tens of millions.
Yeah, this is, I mean, I I just bring up because this is going to, I mean, it's clearly some of our our remaining infill for light industrial jobs. We talk about the economy, wanting to diversify it, trying to attract unemployment opportunities. Um, I I hear what you're saying, um, the Great Northern Project, as I've mentioned, if we don't get grant funding, I don't intend to pursue it and hope I can convince the council not to, um, if we don't get those grants. But um, we know at some point in the future, as industrial facilities get built out there and there's hundreds of more houses out there. Um, we need to make those improvements for those residents and those businesses, so.
These are all, are are these not all, these are all plotted lots here for for housing as well in the Silverwing Development.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they fly, they don't drive.
No, no, I'm talking to the north.
Oh, no, I was just pointing out along that corridor, there's plenty of housing that's going to be built in the next, and Silverwings moving into their next phase as well.
So I I I I hear, I totally hear what you're saying, you're not thrilled that we're focusing our capital on these projects. I guess my question is, um, yeah, I'm seeing this sort of described or describing our three main corridors, Highway two, Great Northern, um, and Boyer, um.
Wouldn't North Boyer be?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, isn't the point of the complan is planning for the future? To have this plan to look into the future for what we may or may not need.
Right.
So I think to your point, to your point, Kyle, without this, it's we're remiss not to include it in the complan when it is a need and will be a need sometime in the future, it cannot be ignored.
Sure, but there's plenty of projects that we're going to need in the future and I'm saying that this project specifically has a lot of problems with it. So to use it as a perfect example of what we should be doing in the future, I think it's problematic because it's, to me, it it has a lot of characteristics of what you should not be doing.
For you, as one individual.
Right.
Yeah, I'd actually kind of go the other way about it when we're all taking the twenty year look at what we're doing and this document serving as a vision, the amount of housing going up there. In terms of the diversity of our businesses, that entire corridor back there, we have the second busiest airport in the entire state of Idaho, only next to Boise International Airport. It brings in roughly eight hundred and thirty some odd million dollars a year into our community. I think uh, Great Northern is a project that we need to focus on um, for those reasons.
Yeah, I I I would say that Sud Valley's airport is busier than.
Um, manufacturing wise, um, so we have DeHare, we have Cameron.
Where'd you get that?
What are the pros and cons of leaving or taking it out? So let's say we leave it, we don't have the money, we're not going to focus on it. But we can get the grants for this specific project, we can work on it, it's in the back of our minds.
I would also point out, this is not a goal or an objective, this entire paragraph is a statement. Is there anything that's not factual in this statement?
May I make a comment that if that is a project completed, that that could allow that cut off from Dover at some point in the future? That the zero zero nine that I have right here, that I still am promoting?
Yeah, I was thinking that same thing, uh, Councilwoman.
That's the only reason I would think that that would perhaps would be a good idea.
You think that would fall into the goals and policies, goals and objectives?
And this is long term.
Yep.
Isn't Baldy going to be, aren't we going to put a sidewalk, isn't that, wasn't Baldy supposed to be a project?
It was originally explored by Urban Renewal um, for full um, uh, complete street on the north side. Urban renewal can um, spend money.
Just saying that would connect.
We have a multimodal concept for division, a complete rebuild of division. Um, we're restriping it this summer, obviously, actually next month. Um, to widen bike lanes and narrow vehicle lanes and our uh, city project manager and engineer Holly is currently applying for a one million dollar ATIP grant to do a complete design and construction bid document for multimodal rebuild of division all the way around Baldy and around the corner of the GN Road. So you mentioned it doesn't connect, but we are planning to build out bicycle and pedestrian connectivity from division to Baldy Mountain Road. That's a project that we're currently seeking grant funds for the design of. And I'd also point out, we're now half a million dollars into the design. currently seeking grant funds for the design of. And I'd also point out, we're now half a million dollars into the design documents for the Great Northern rebuild. And as the mayor said a few times now, if we don't get the the grants, it's not gonna get done. But the Sura North was formed literally to fund the reconstruction of Great Northern. This is something that previous councils long ago decided was a, a long-term priority project. So we, when we get to goals, we can look at what specific goals we have around that. But is there anything in that paragraph that's not factual that we want to change?
What do you feel about that now?
I mean, if I'm outvoted, then we can keep it.
It's, it's, we don't like that project.
I think it's an example of how we should not be spending our money. And so enshrining it in the preamble to our transportation section is, is giving the wrong impression that we should be spending such a large part of our budget and we have such a limited budget to spend on a area that is rapidly growing someday with businesses that might show up. And perhaps if they do, they should contribute, but I guess it'll all be built when they get there.
Well, what about leaving out a reconstruction of the roadway at last? And keep the fact that it serves a rapidly growing industrial area, if that's true, as well as.
Right now, all we have is storage units. Well, I mean, there is there out there, but.
Again, but you have to look ahead. It's not just what we have in the now, it's what's ahead, it's a vision. That's what the comp plan is, if they didn't even document.
If this stayed in here and then you're pressured to start doing this with our own money a year from now, like, I don't think anybody, we, we don't have the money.
No.
But if the money was presented, say, to a future council, at least that can, we could say, yeah, that's something cool, we got grant money for that, let's, let's do it. I don't see personally any harm, I hear exactly where you're coming from. I personally won't see harm in leaving that as a fact. But I don't see necessarily, I didn't read that as, that's a priority that we're focusing on now. But if that whole corridor could be connected, I think that'd be great in the future with the right money, if we got the money with all the new possible future housing, which it seems like is very likely.
Yeah.
As I understand it, but, so I'm saying, I agree with you, Kyle. That I wouldn't vote to spend all the money on it right now. That didn't, I didn't feel that as threatening as a priority now, just personally. That's not how I took that.
Fair enough. I'm, it's not a hill I'm willing to die on, so I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
Yeah, and Councilman Schreiber, I just wanna, I'll tell you know, I, I don't have the final numbers, but technically it's not the city's money, it's server's money and then potentially grant funding. So if that project doesn't come forward through grant funding, as I said, I'm not gonna pursue it. We don't have the funds to pursue it. And if it fails in the future, it'd be a challenge to respond to it. So this may help us get funding in some way, shape or form.
Yeah, I don't think we should be focusing our transportation budget inward rather than outward, and sir could also use that budget to put the underpass to Highway Two, so.
Good point.
You know, there's better places we could be spending our money, that's all I'm saying. But we can move on.
Councilwoman Duquette, regarding the Western bypass, I think to, if I'm catching what you're saying, and it may not be, I sometimes miss the mark badly, but as this document's talking about, and I'll get to the page here, it's right above where Councilman Schreiber was just discussing, it's page.
Page sixty-six was what he was.
Page, I'm talking about page sixty-four.
Oh.
It talks about there's somewhere about downtown east-west traffic.
That's just after.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, page sixty-six. Up towards the top, second paragraph, east-west routes to downtown are heavily traveled. You could say something like, and as a result, the city desires to explore a Western bypass.
Okay, I would like to put that in there. It has to be eventually, otherwise you're not gonna be able to move in town with traffic. And people that aren't coming to town don't need to drive through.
It was on our multimodal plan, our urban area transportation plan.
It's still on the tender long term.
Well, that's no longer adopted.
Huh?
That's council meeting.
Okay, I would love to put that in if everybody else.
Might, might be a additional sentence at the end of that paragraph.
Yes.
Additional improvements are recommended to minimize traffic and congestion.
And the city such as exploring, or it's the city's desire to explore the feasibility of a Western bypass. Yes, that meets, I think, what Councilwoman Duquette was mentioning.
Okay.
Anyone unable to vote for the comp plan of that language is inserted? Excellent.
Bypasses of state highways are really popular in North Carolina.
US highways do.
Right. Anything under the intent section before we move into goals, and we probably will wrap up before we dive into those goals. We have a couple maps to look at as well. Oops, sorry. Back to intent. Okay, we'll move on. These are pulled right out of our multimodal transportation plan, so this is not the place to modify those. And goals and objectives, why don't we try to get through goals and objectives? We could maybe finish chapter six. That's good. Okay, goal one, provide a balanced approach to mobility. Access to businesses, efficient residents and visitors alike benefit from a walkable and bikeable community. Any language within those objectives that we'd like to?
I meant the number of approaches, something I'm reading to myself.
Which one are we looking at?
Just making sure I wrote down the right number. Yeah, I wrote down A, but I'm actually like to add the.
Goal one, goal one.
Goal one, B.
B. And I'd like. Goal one, B, improve and enhance safety and traffic circulation to preserve an acceptable level of service at intersections.
I'd like to add, without jeopardizing pedestrian safety at the end of that sentence.
Okay, and I'm sorry, that's my computer.
Right here.
I missed what you were saying.
Goal B right here.
One, B, improve and enhance safety and traffic to preserve an acceptable level. Yes.
What was the last part you added to that?
Without jeopardizing pedestrian safety, I think sometimes the conversation about level of surface loses the goal that maximizing level of surface often happens at the expense of pedestrian safety.
Yes.
I like that.
Definitely does. Okay, everybody sounds like they're okay with that?
Yeah.
Any other objective edits of these goal ones?
G?
G. G says, review and implement a strategy to, to improve street lighting for improved safety while maintaining a balanced approach with the dark sky ordinance.
I have something about enforcing the code in the dark sky ordinance. It said ten years that it would be done. Wait, what did I say? I'm sorry. I, I would also like to replace the lights with LEDs as they wear out, and I don't know if that's in.
Isn't that a Vista? Isn't that a Vista's purview? Are you, you're talking streetlights?
Mm-hmm. Because it's talking about improving street lighting. So code eight, the eight-four, eight-four-one, eight-four-five. So if it's code, we shouldn't talk about it?
No, I'm just, I'm just asking the question. I think that's a Vista's purview. I mean, they're the ones that own the streetlights.
Probably.
No?
They're not city.
I think we own some.
Some, but not all?
It depends on location. I don't know that answer, but I believe we own some. Uh, Councilwoman Duquette, I think the, the, the dark, dark sky is most appropriate, I believe, chapter eleven, natural areas. And you can really hammer it there.
Okay. Just, we, it's not that's, we have a code, it's just not.
Right.
Being enforced.
That's right. Because we're, we're on a few things, we need more planners.
Okay.
To write code.
Okay.
My, my question concern is A. If you're not aware, I read a book called The High Cost of Free Parking that had a huge impact on my life. And as a result, I was supportive in eliminating the off-street parking requirements downtown. The way I read A, it seems to almost encourage and put off-street and parking first and foremost in, in in sort of the realm, whereas if you've traveled to Europe and Italy and other places, these great downtowns are great because of the lack of parking lots.
Yeah.
They're, they're great because there's buildings and stores and fabric for people and public grounds for people to enjoy and stroll and shop and explore. So I, I don't love A. Does anyone else read that as being really parking-heavy?
I, it does say parking about six times.
Yeah.
I did.
I was gonna address that elsewhere, but yeah.
Yeah, I had comments elsewhere about parking, but I share those concerns.
Mr. Mayor, what do we call our, our overlay of the parking exempt zone?
Yeah.
There's a parking exempt zone downtown where.
Right, that's where we require this.
Provide parking. So we do have.
Joel's dad, actually.
Right, yeah, that was.
That was Councilman.
Reuters myself, yeah. No, that was the, the reason.
Yeah. So we, we do have code that exempts downtown businesses from providing off-street parking.
Yeah.
I do, it does make me wonder how this particular objective made it to the top of.
Yeah. I don't love, I mean, yes, it's a give and take and currently, but frankly, in twenty years, the way Elon Musk is talking, we're gonna have robo-taxis and none of us are gonna have cars because they're just gonna show up when you think about it.
Be mussed up.
And eating bugs.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I gotta cook.
But do you push back just a little bit? At downtown business owners, all we hear is that we don't come downtown because there's no available parking. As we watch them drive to Walmart.
And what I, what I would, yeah, what I would say is, there's not convenient.
And I will point out the difference between us and those other countries, as the, as the mayor had pointed out, it's having a car here is much easier for people to own it as opposed to over there. So there are a far less number of cars in those countries as compared to our own.
Your argument of how it can't, and it's not yours, I know that people have said, sorry. About driving to Walmart because they can't park downtown makes absolutely no sense.
It doesn't. But we hear it all the time. We've heard it at several city council meetings and we hear it anecdotally all the time.
They can't park right in front of the store they want to.
You're absolutely right.
But that's a little bit absurd.
Parking studies, there are several streets over by South Fork Hardware that maintain relatively open parking spaces throughout the day as well, even during the peak hours during the summer. But I do get your point, though. It is parking-heavy and I'd be willing to listen to some language I'm changing, but let's not forget the the business owners in the downtown corridor.
Right. And, and I am a business owner downtown and have been for several years. Have an office downtown with clients. I am there when I'm not mayor the rest of my life. And I, I'm amazed at how, I mean, there are exceptions in times when it's tight, big events, peak summer days. But in general, the rest of the year, I'm shocked at how much parking is down there. I mean, I, I had lunch at Baxter's today. The second half is wide open at noon. So most of the year, I think, we have plenty of parking. So the specific language.
I guess when you move down to, I might, some of my language I would think about would be better wayfinding for walkable streets, right? So but there's potentially, we could change this one and maybe move some stuff around in goal two.
I would be, I'd be open to striking A entirely.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, me too.
I'll tell you guys, I'll tell you guys my secret, it's after kids, so I, I like parking as close as possible. You go around like five times and pray and. No more than five times.
You could have been somewhere by then, parked at one.
Well, or, or could we say enhance access to businesses, shops, restaurants and other destinations through parking management solutions? Would you be open to that?
Yeah, yeah.
And accessible parking areas, convenient and accessible parking areas? And get rid of, the bike folks might have some issues with the bike parking por- portion of it, but I think that might help by striking the on-streak, on-street sufficient supply of car parking.
Yeah.
But we need bike parking.
Yeah. Parking management.
Bike parking, please.
Is it?
I do, that's all I do. Yeah, I bike downtown all the time.
I'm, I'm super, I, I think that, that, that would that would make it more accommodate, acceptable to me.
Yeah.
Just get, get the on-street parking.
Instead of striking, enhance access to business and shops, restaurants and other destinations through parking management solutions, ensuring convenient accessible parking areas.
Maybe for vehicle, for car and bike.
Bank.
For cars and bikes.
Melissa, may I ask if you're able to take notes on that? My, Microsoft Word is completely conked out on me a little.
We can come back at this moment in time in the meeting. It's seven fifty-six for that one.
I think we might. Melissa, if you were able to write that last one down, I'll get it from you.
I am taking notes. Jason and I did get some of that, but the rest we will grab from the recording tomorrow.
Great. Let's see. Let's get through this goal one, we'll call it. So any other edits to goal one here?
Yeah, I've got issues with E and F. So in our land use, basically every single designation calls out gridded streets. And here, both E and F talk about limiting access to arterials and collectors. And to me, those two are in direct contradiction. If you're gonna have gridded streets, then you have to have access points for those gridded streets or else there's no point. You're actually wasting land by building unnecessary streets if if you're not gonna allow the fluids to connect with the collectors and arterials. My preference is to, to have the gridded streets and the access points and create safety by lower speed limits, whereas if you fall to limiting the number of approaches onto collectors and arterials by, to minimize safety conflicts, then.
You're prioritizing the vehicles.
You're prioritizing the vehicles. And so the language that I would propose is for goal one E, revise that to balance the benefits of a limited number of approaches onto arterials with the benefits of gridded streets.
You one have a heartache over those changes.
And then for goal F, I would revise it to review roadway access standards rather than continue to require them.
Can't we keep minimized safety conflicts between pedestrians and bicyclists?
Yeah, I think that needs to be in there some work.
Because that's pretty important. Balanced approach.
Mr. Mayor, isn't that whole number one or what Kyle, Councilman Schreiber was talking about, more of a planning issue with developments? So there weren't so many access points into a development. I think that's correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that what that refers to? So we don't have four, five into one development? That's a developed, so, so you have.
Well, we have, we've run into this many times. There's, you know, we've got within the urban area transportation plan and the multimodal plan, we have streets identified as local, minor arterials, major arterials or collectors. And there are like regulations at, at higher levels of government about how close access points can be along different streets based on their destination and their speed, so.
And volumes, I mean.
We, we could put something in code saying that we want, you know, to encourage a grid system and slow traffic down, but if a street is identified as a major arterial, it's not really up to us. It's it's within the, the urban area transportation plan, which is a regional.
Well, that's where funding priority now. But I mean, the goal of limiting approaches on collectors and arterials is to maintain the corridor integrity. So because those are high-volume roads, you want the traffic to flow quickly and efficiently. To Councilman Schreiber's point, one of the alternatives to having major arterials is having a dispersed traffic pattern where people, imagine pouring water down a down the city streets. Where's it gonna go? You can either have it go down big pipes or it can. You can either have it go down big pipes or it can kind of disperse, and the advantage of having a dispersed system. Is that you don't get these big, high-speed, high-volume roads, which definitely impact the property owners on those. On those corridors, um, so. I, I, I personally, I like the blend of what you both said, you know, your comments, but then I think it's important to keep that. That acknowledgement of conflicts between pedestrians and bicyclists.
You both.
So a blend of the two. And I, I feel comfortable with staff, you know, hearing that in the comments and blending the two, I think you. Got your two points out there.
Yeah.
Anyone, um, unable to vote for it, a blend of that or replace E? Beautiful.
And how about F, can we say, review roadway access management standards? Rather than continue to require them?
I would wanna talk to Brandon personally to understand what that means.
I had to do a little research myself today, I'm like, what exactly is this talking about, and it's exactly what you were just talking about. So I don't know why we have two of the same. Requirements there, yeah, but I would like to address both of them.
Question mark on F and find out, or just get rid of it?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, we're, we're facing an example of F right now with a particular development in standpoint where.
You're adding a hundred and plus.
Yeah.
Units with probably four to five hundred trips per day.
And, and the developers do not want to comply with roadway access standard requirements from ITD.
And the result.
For us to back them, so.
Gridlock, like, you would, you would not, it would stop all traffic.
Not to mention, every member of the public that talked about this particular development says they have to put internal lanes or else it's. So there's roadway access requirements that if we took this language out, we'd, we'd, we'd be a little bit less justified in complying with.
For example, as, as I understand it, U of I.
But they're there for a reason.
Review them, not eliminate them, I didn't, I didn't.
But assure compliance with is possibly.
Could be, continue to review and require compliance.
And these are not standards that we write, these are standards that are adopted statewide and nationally. So we, it's not up to us to review them, we, we're required to comply with them.
Oh, okay.
Well, then why does it need to be in the comp plan at all?
Yeah, that, that would be the question.
As by law.
Um, I, I don't, that's, that's the bigger question is why is F in there, um.
I, I feel more comfortable finding out more before picking that out, just to make sure, but.
Yeah, an example of U of I, you put hundreds of homes off of Boyer without some of these requirements. You might not have the ability to justify putting in a turn lane or acceleration lane or decelerate lane, like. Kind of has been built into Ebbet Way on the east side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but yeah, I guess I'd wanna talk to our engineer to understand exactly how he's applying those personally, but.
I'm comfortable revisiting that, yeah, I mean, we're gonna come back.
And we, we can, you know, before we, we'll take a final vote, once we get through it, to send it on for public amendments to public hearing. Um, so I think we can still, if you make a mental note, I'll, I'll make one to check on this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we could jump back in, change one last thing and send it off for. Hearing, and then even at the hearing, um, as long as it's not a, uh, material change, we can, uh, make some minor adjustments. Um, potentially the night when we hear it, then adopt it.
Let me just look really quick, because I have a note that seven A was also involved. Which says.
Seven A, goal seven A?
With new development projects, encourage the design and construction of local streets to improve multimodal connectivity. Oh, and encourage a well-connected grid.
What, what page are you?
Seventy-one.
Uh, that's seven A, so it's.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one. Again, we're, we're promoting the grid-type pattern, but then we're also saying we want arterials that don't have a grid-type pattern. So. We should probably choose one or the other, I'm in favor of the grid-type pattern.
Me too.
Me too.
Um, so anything else on one or two, if not, I think, I'm sorry, one?
One, I was gonna say about two.
If not, we can put a fork in it, take some public comment, and then pick it up. Hopefully, we can do some more of these meetings in the coming weeks.
Yeah, why don't we take public comment up to goal one on chapter six, and then we'll adjourn. Is there anybody who would like to comment on the multimodal transportation chapter up through goal one at this time? Okay, hearing none, uh, with no further business on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairwoman, interim chairwoman. And interim, well, Mr. Mayor, you're now chairing, sorry, it was Joel for a while. We will adjourn at eight oh six PM, thank you, everyone.